Of the artists here in the room live in Linden. Okay, and how many of you commute to one of our awesome schools in Linden? Okay. Very nice. Love it. All right, we're good to go. I've been given the thumbs up. All right, we'd like to welcome you to our Linden City Council this evening, Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We always begin first here in our regular session. I will be conducting here as mayor, my, as mayor, my name is Carolyn Lundberg, here with my fellow council members. And we always begin first with an invocation which will be offered tonight by Councilmember Van Broderick.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the many blessings that Thou has given us. We are grateful for this great city that we live in and for the wonderful people that live here and for their goodness and the contributions that they make one to another. We pray for our first responders, grateful for this service that they provide to our community. Please bless them and keep them safe. We're grateful for all of our city employees and the great service that they provide. We are thankful for the moisture that we have been receiving and ask that thou continue to bless us with the proper amounts and the proper places and help us to avoid flooding. We invite Thy Spirit to be with us here this evening as we discuss the items that are necessary in our city, grateful for these youth that have participated in the Linden Connection, and please bless and be with them, and we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Van. All right, we will have the honor now of doing the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag, and this will be led by Caitlin Hill.
Please read the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You Caitlin, you did that like a pro, okay? All right, now we will have our item number one. If you would like to get a copy of the agenda, it's there at the door. And we will first have our call to order, our roll call of those in attendance here on the dais with me. Sorry.
May be present.
Van Broderick present.
Present.
Daryl Magleby present.
Jake Hoyt present.
Okay, wonderful. And do we have any comments, announcements from council members other than in our regularly scheduled item there later in the agenda for reports? Okay, we next will go on to a special presentation. We are so grateful for this program that was started by Kathy Allred. How long, how long has it been now, Kathy? This is year?
This year it's thirty years.
Years, my goodness, we should have had like balloons or something. Okay, that's quite tremendous. So Kathy is tonight going to be presenting for, on behalf of the Linden Character Connection, the awards to the students for the two thousand and twenty-two Character Connection calendar. All right, I'll take. Two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, it was in the.
Twenty twenty-two contest. And then we did, they did the pictures from the couch. And as I was talking to the parents when I called the winners, some of the parents didn't know what character connection was. So I just want to tell you really quickly that thirty years ago, Alpine School District contacted some of the teachers and parents and gave a presentation about how they weren't allowed to teach values in the school because those were considered in nineteen ninety-three religious items. And so they couldn't teach the character values that they felt was needed. And so they asked if we would get together with a committee, and so we formed the Linden Character Connection Committee, connecting businesses, the families, and the schools that all are in Linden and, and some in Orem, like Aspen participates. And we got together and did values and did a four-year plan. And we had newsletter, we had workshops, we had values and posters in each class, in each school, and all, and all. And then different programs like character, Seven Pillars of Character and three or four other character programs emerged. And so each school started doing their own thing, except that the schools in Linden, we've kept doing character connection. And then twenty-two years ago, then we were approached by Wasatch Mental Health, and I'd like to introduce Doran Williams. He's the head of Wasatch Mental Health, and he coordinates a calendar every year that Wasatch Mental Health puts out, Behavioral Health is what it's called. And this is the calendar, and they needed pictures. So we asked the kids if they would make some pictures and submit them. And so every year, for twenty-two years since then, we've had the pictures submitted, and we've had the calendar made. And then from the calendar pictures, we make this poster that goes in the city and also in each school. And it also has the pictures. Now sometimes the designer of the calendar decides to do some creative things. And we, we put, um, put in two or three pictures, and then they take and design and help. And the cover this year, this cover this year is two students' pictures. There's the picture of the eagle, and that was done by Sarah Silva. Sarah, will you stand up? She's not here yet. Okay, Sarah Silva from Rocky Mountain. And then Matthias Mello, is he here? Then Matthias, he drew the landscape that we have the eagle, that they had the eagle flying over. So we get to honor two students at once. Thank you, Matthias. And then in December, they also, the committee also chose two people, Shelby Ross and Micah Sears. So Shelby and Micah, stand up. Shelby and Micah. And theirs, let me show this to you. Theirs is pretty spectacular. The theme was peace and love, and this is the picture that they drew. One's the bigger picture and one's the smaller picture because the committee couldn't decide which one was best. So we said, don't decide, we'll honor them both. And so that's what we did. And so we have prizes, we have a certificate for each of the schools. Is the Rocky Mountain Principal, Mrs. Roden here, or Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, we have certificates every year for them honoring them as schools of character. And so we'll get those to them as well as their posters. So we can have our mayor come up, and each one of the winners will get a certificate, and then they'll also get four calendars, and then they'll also get a prize. And in the prizes are artist supplies and treats. So we'll have, is Sarah Silva and Matthias? Okay, Matthias, this is his, and then here's his stack. There's this stack, that whole stack is his. So each one of the winners get four. And then we're gonna, he's gonna stand up here, stand up here, and we're gonna get a picture. You want a picture of everyone at a time?
We'll get everyone together as a group with the council, that's all.
Yes. So first of all, one at a time. All right, then for January, on generosity, we have Spencer Allred. There you go. Doran, can I have you come up and give the certificates?
Sure.
So if you'll give Matthias his, Spencer his. And then for February, for caring, we have Adeline Esplin. And then for March, we have Riley Merrill. And for April, integrity, we have Natalie Godfrey. Okay, for citizenship, we have Jacob Snid. Then for family health, in June, we have Luca Folkman, and she's at a dance competition. So then July, we have Serena Porto. And then for August, we have Alyssa Hill, Community and Character. September, we have steadfastness, Jason Jenkins. October, responsibility, Lexi Belliston. Gratitude, November, Maya Houston.
Nick Houston.
Nick Houston. There she is. I apologize, Maya, that's a beautiful name. December is love, and we have Shelby Ross and Micah Sears. That's yours?
Stand in the middle.
Okay, now if we could have the city council. Randy, if you would just want to stand behind.
Ready? One, two, three, smile. We so appreciate this program. I'd just like to invite any council members to give any additional thoughts before we do this.
Kathy, thank you, thank you for the, I've lived in, in Linden for twenty-nine years, and one of the things I loved best is that they had character connection when I got here. So I've just watched it all along, and it's just so wonderful to have this still going on in our city. So thank you both, you and your husband, for all the efforts in continuing this wonderful program.
Thank you, and we'll be leaving some calendars with the city, and we'll also be giving some calendars to Rocky Mountain Elementary and also Linden Elementary.
Okay.
If you want more than the four that you're given, you can just contact the school.
We, we should also give a, a thank you to the county that helps sponsor this program as well as a partner, and, uh, which is funded by the county. So we're so grateful for these programs and, and character. It really makes a difference in the community, especially with the next generation. So we so appreciate all the volunteer time, your beautiful artwork in here that we're going to get to enjoy, and we appreciate all of you coming out tonight on this cold night. We are going to continue now with our agenda onto some of the other items. And if you would like to see how city government operates, you are so welcome to stay, but you are not required to stay either. So if you, if you would like to vacate at this time, you're welcome or at any point along the agenda, but thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor, I think the artwork's getting better.
There you go.
We've been doing this for a few years. It's, it's getting better.
I wonder if there's any generational turnover, if we've had somebody in the beginning that is also has a child.
A question for Kathy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great job.
We're going to move to item number three now, which is our open session for public comment. If anyone here from the public would like to address the council briefly on, on a concern or issue that is not on the agenda, we would welcome to the table now. All right. Seeing none, we'll move forward to item number four. This is our council reports. And we'd love to start with whomever feels ready on the answer of the table.
Doesn't matter, either one.
I'm always ready. I am going to send you guys a quick picture from Heath. It's a proposal that relates to our Geneva Resort Park. It's for an urban fishery. Heath's been doing a little bit of legwork. For an option to have an urban fishery, maybe if you've been to St. George, you've seen a few of these. It would be restocked, the DWR would help. There's quite a bit of legwork to it, and so I think Heath wants to know from the council if this is a non-starter for us, if this is a hard no, he would like to know now. So I'm gonna send that to you. Take a look at it. It's a rough draft. We don't even, I asked Heath on cost and numbers, he was not sure yet. It's just a high level. If you're a hard no, we do not want an urban fishery down in Geneva Resort.
Would it take up the whole?
No, and I'll send you that. It, it takes up point eight of an acre. So I'll send you that. If you have strong feelings, uh, reach out to Heath and I and let us know. I told him I'd, I'd test the temperature. Me personally, I'd like to say that I, I'd be very in favor of it. I think it sounds like a lot of fun. I know I just stayed at a place down in St. George that had one, and it was cool to just pop out and, and, and go fishing.
We, we kind of have an urban fishery in a sense because if you take the little trail to that little outlet, the creek, great catfish bass fishing. There's anglers there all the time.
There is.
In that little creek. But when we walked the property with some of the state officials, it, it sounded like there potentially could be grant funds for this as well. So we could see if there's something there, but.
With some age restriction on that, or is there that information?
Say that again.
Age restriction, is it something that would be just, uh, you'd have to have a license? Or is it twelve and under? I don't know.
That's a great question. I'm, I'm not sure. Any ideas on, I, I'm not sure. Great question, and, and maybe direct those towards Heath. Just know that there's quite a bit of legwork to be done, and so if we don't want to do it, let's, let's tell him now. Police chief gave me a quick update. We, we took a youth group through the police department. Barlow gave us a tour this last week, and they do such a good job. I told him, um, and Farley as well, Officer Farley, that they have the full support of this council and how much we appreciate them. As we, just before we got there, they were in a incident down at Home Depot where they had to have a foot chase. And so when, uh, Barlow got here to give us our tour, he was a little bit out of breath, and I kept joking with him. But we do have the best police department, um, and, and if you do have a chance, they are always open and willing to take youth groups through and, and wanting to do that. I feel like my boys, we took a group of about ten, they left feeling like the, the police department is your friend. They aren't someone that you hurry and put your seatbelt on for because you're afraid of them. They are your friends to wave at them. They did a great job, so always appreciative of our police department. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Daryl?
I actually don't have anything to report tonight. Sentinel celebration, I'm trying to get that started, and we'll be working on that throughout this year for two thousand and twenty-four, and look forward to some really fun activities for our city for the Sentinel celebration, so. Nothing for me.
Thank you, great. So something that I, speaking of Geneva Park Resort, Juan Carido and I visited the Tempanoga Special Services District, which is the water treatment facility just north, contiguous from the lake shore with us. And this is a plan that they have currently for the shoreline that was really interesting. So we took a tour with the Army Corps of Engineers, who would need to kind of sign off on this, and so that's in process also, as well as some other individuals there. And if you look at the shoreline trail, so they're looking to create some engineered wetlands. They look, they would love to connect the trail that we already have paved to that point, have a connected trail. This is something we're also working on with the Lake Authority Board that I serve on. And they would have a boardwalk, they'd have all kinds of nature points, a bird tower they're looking to have, and different ponds and, and areas out there and helpfully, hopefully get removed some of the invasive species, the fragmites weeds, the Russian olive, and then help get more native species. While we were out there, we saw the bald eagles that hang out. It was really quite spectacular. So it's a big plan. They're doing a big infrastructure piping system clear. We went clear up to Saratoga Springs-Lehigh Boundary where they're working on some of the infrastructure coming into there. They serve, they serve about ten districts with the treatment of their water. We actually do not currently have our sewage treated there, but there are some places within our city on that west side. It would make a lot of sense to potentially talk with them about, Juan is interested, so that was something Juan is looking into, and will be presenting potentially what costs could be to tie in with them. They seem to think that that obviously was a, a natural fit with our boundaries being adjacent. So anyway, I just wanted to share this map with you of what they're planning to do and some of that shoreline restoration, and how that, I think, could be very synergistic with anything that we, the things that council has been looking at with the Geneva Park Resort as well. So that's, and then we also had, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna announce everything I participated in this last couple of weeks. I know some of you also did, so I'll let you report on those items. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did attend the Public Works and Engineering meeting with our city administrator and mayor. Always a good meeting, getting updated on the projects that are proceeding in the city, any challenges that there might be. Probably the most interesting thing to note is the secondary water meter installation. A little over two hundred of them have been installed now, and about twenty to thirty of them are happening today, happening a day, which is a pretty impressive. So it will be coming to your area if it hasn't, starting on the west side now and moving its way forward, but pleased to see that happening to, good way to help conserve water and meet the state mandates as well. That's it.
To Jake's point about the police department, I have to give major kudos to them. We had, um, two Sundays ago, we woke up and there was a struggling deer in our yard, and, um, broken legs, and, and it had crawled all the way from, I, I'm assuming just giving the location of, from fourth east all the way to the back of our yard, and it must have been hit by a vehicle, but, um, our officers came and helped take care of that. And, um, it, it took a little bit of time to make sure the proper equipment came for, to help put this animal down in a, in a humane way. But, um, they did a great service and they did it in a very professional way. And just big kudos to our police department for that. Regarding CERT, I've sent Adam, he's gonna help me out with this, a QR code that Kelly has sent out for, will be in on our newsletter, I mean, on the city website. But if anyone wants to, um, um, sign up for CERT, this is our march. Go ahead and shoot a, a picture of this. This will be March fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and then twenty-fifth. They'll take up to twenty people. It's free of charge, but there is a forty-dollar fee to be able to get all of the equipment unless you can kind of glean it and put it together yourself. So that's our CERT that's coming up. Our seniors, Jamie has told me that we've got about over a dozen new people that have been attending since the beginning of the year. So friends are bringing friends and our citizens, our senior citizens are, we're all getting a little older and, and qualifying for that, and then some get called home. So we kind of have this attrition that happens with our seniors, but it's a lovely new group that's come with them. They went to the movies today. They went to go see A Man Named Otto. They go regularly to the movies as a group, if they can get enough people. And then also Jimmy wanted me to say that they've been very fortunate to have youth groups, whether it's the schools and other youth groups that are coming and sharing time with the seniors at lunchtime. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for cross-generation interactions happening. And Easter brunch is coming up. That's gonna be, I believe, the thirtieth of March. If council can put that on your calendars. Last year, we were able to enjoy some time with the council, I mean, with the seniors, and we are invited to that March, Thursday, March thirtieth. Yes, I said that right. Youth council, we are all heading out tomorrow with the, it's with the leagues, the leagues of city town hosting Local Officials Day, and also the time for our, the youth councils throughout the state will gather together at State Capitol and at the Hyatt Regency tomorrow. That's why our bus is parked outside. We will be taking that. And we're meeting at seven o'clock, and I'm not sure, is it just Daryl and mayor and myself?
Mike, if he's.
And Mike, if he's feeling better, so. And one of us has to be a designated bus driver, and I do not volunteer for that. So since I'm driving my own vehicle.
I drove the bus before, but if anyone else wants to drive, they'll come to drive.
That's, that's right. So it's gonna be a wonderful day. I'm excited that our legislature started today. And.
Yeah. I actually learned to drive a fifteen-passenger van. That's what I learned to drive on as a fifteen-year-old. With no, with no power steering, by the way.
That, that makes it, makes sure that we've earned extra credits for our driver's license when we were young. So excited that the legislators, the state legislature has started today, and looking forward to tracking some of those bills and, and grateful for that, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And just a couple of quick things. We have, coming up on February ninth, is the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce Gala Night. That is the big fundraiser night, and there, where we raise funds for some local youth organizations. And this year, they're planning to have it at a new venue that can accommodate all of the council and a plus-one. So go ahead, and if you want to put that on your calendar, it will be February ninth, and you are out of the country unfortunately. And then I don't know if you received this from Thanksgiving point. They have, uh, have any of you, I can share this with you as well later. They are having a city officials and families event to show the new Museum of Natural Curiosity is opening a farm that called Curiosity Farms, and it's geared towards helping the community. It's a laboratory for learning, like milking a cow, teaching entrepreneurship and life skills to kids, including Title I students. So I'll share this with you if you want to look at it, calendar it, and you can RSVP if you'd like to go. And you're allowed to bring families, some kids, to, grandkids as well. Okay. All right, so next, we have our administrator's report.
Yeah, just a few items. Van mentioned the secondary water meter installation. We've had over two hundred that have been put in. Relatively few inquiries. It's gone very smooth, knock on wood here. So it's minimally invasive. Let me show you a couple of photos if you haven't seen this. This was, um, one of the days that they were out. So this is being excavated with a hydroback, which is basically a high-pressure water.
Vacuum cleaner.
Yeah, and then it's sucked out of that area. And so these trucks come by, they mark where the meter is, and, and then liquefy and suck out all of the dirt around the, the meter box. And then if it's left open for any period of time, they are staking those off. And then they have a follow-up crew that comes by and installs the meter and replaces the box if needs be. This is one where the meter's actually installed. And then it's put back together. They are putting in the top soil. Any areas like in this photo where there's some saw that would need to be replaced will be, um, they're keeping track of that at our. at our Public Works Department. And those will be replaced with grass in the summer when sod is available. So it's gone really smooth. We are actually in an area eight and nine over the next couple of weeks is where we expect to be. So this is a map. We divided the city into quadrants. They've finished about one through four or so already. They are currently in area five and six, working. And then we've sent out notices for area eight and nine, and door hangers are being put out as well. So they're making good progress. So that's a good thing.
They were in five on Monday. That's my neighborhood and they converted our neighborhood.
Good.
And just so the community knows as well, I've had residents reach out concerned about what landscaping they might need to move or how far a distance. And Public Works said, don't worry if you have something that does need to be temporarily moved. The city arborist said winter is a great time while things are dormant. And they are also willing to come out and look at your area around the meter and look, you know, give recommendations or look at ways that can help mitigate what might be impacted. So.
Yeah, most things should be okay. It's been pleasant with how minimally invasive it actually is.
Right, it's just a few inches. It's not a big area.
Six to eight inches around the box has been pretty typical. So. Let's see, we talked about the Youth Council Day at the Legislature tomorrow. And then, just a reminder, Chase has sent out a couple of emails on those conflict of interest forms. We have to do those annually. And then that ethical behavior pledge form, if you can submit those. And then, a couple FYIs. We renegotiated our, our lease was up on our basement just below us here in this building with the law firm that's down there. And they've asked to extend that. And so we renewed that for another three years with an option to go to five years and did a market analysis and increased that rate a little bit based on market, similar rentals in the market. We.
They're a good tenant.
They have.
You don't hear a lot from them.
Yeah, very quiet. There's only five people usually or so. And they have a few families or customers that come in. Their field is estate planning and that. So they're doing wills and things like that is what I understand, so. Over this last week, we have had five to six flooding incidents that we're aware of. We've had a couple, all of these actually have been along the main ditch, which is where we're fortunate to have received this grant and provide some piping here in the future. Had some that overtopped the ditch and flooded out some of these fields. We had water running down these two streets, 10th North and 20 South. These neighborhoods, when they were installed, it would have been late 80s, early 90s. There was a high water table in this area to begin with. And they all have land drains around their foundations that then connect to a main collection pipe in the street. And that pipe has been at capacity during this last several weeks. And so any water that's getting into their foundation drains doesn't have anywhere to go. And so we've had a couple homes where their basements have had water seeping in. So it's not surface water. But we're aware of a few flooding incidents there. And then we had, I think it was these two homes here, right off of the main ditch, similar issue. It was groundwater coming into the basements. And so we hope when this is piped that some of that water issue will be resolved. But too much water in the wrong spot, unfortunately, as Van's invocation mentioned. We hope it goes in the right spot, so. Let's see, on. Then just a quick update. I wanted to share with you the cemetery. We are planning for Phase Two, which is everything to the left of that red line. To the right of the red line is currently built. And about 65% to 75% of it is sold. So everything to the left of that red line would be Phase Two. We'll be designing that next fiscal year, so this fall or the coming spring. We are currently, have worked with Jim Dane, who's designed some building plans. And in this year's fiscal budget was planned for a building that would contain permanent restrooms. We do get several requests for restrooms at the site. And during the summer, we'll bring in a portable toilet. This is basically a garage area for us to store the equipment used in the interments and the office in the bathrooms. And so pretty simple building. And then we have some concrete storage areas that will have a roof over it for sand and topsoil. Just wanted to give you a heads up. This is elevations of the proposed building. And this is going to the Planning Commission on the 24th of this month. And it doesn't come to the City Council for approval, but I just wanted to give you the FYI on that. So the structure itself was budgeted in this current fiscal year. And as soon as we get Planning Commission approval, we'll finalize some site plans and then put that out to bid and see what the numbers come in at, so. Any questions on any of that? No? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, sorry, six, which is the approval of the minutes. If the council had a moment to review those, any additions or changes?
I didn't find anybody else.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to approve them, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 19th, 2022.
Second.
Right, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we are unanimous. All right, now we move forward to the Consent Agenda, item number seven. And we do have an item here being presented for approval. I'll go ahead and let you do that.
Yeah, this is a resolution, just to update the council liaison assignments list. Mayor recommended a couple of changes there. It was consisting of just some items that we really don't utilize very often, administration, board of adjustment. So those have been removed. And then we added the 2024 Centennial Celebration with Daryl. And then the newsletter up and Mayor Pro-Tam assignments for the year, so.
So we'll stop our weekly meetings on the board of.
Yeah.
All right, any questions regarding this for the next while? You're all doing amazing, fantastic job. Thank you so much for all your different ways that you're serving in these capacities. And if we're ready.
Nope, very supportive. Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve the Consent Agenda items as with, well, as presented, including the changes from Mayor Lundberg.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Magleby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay. I'll just want the record to reflect, I sure enjoy my responsibilities, but I said this last year. I just feel like the assignments, as they're dispersed, are very, how do I want to say this? I don't know, I don't want to say too much. I just want to say that the distribution of the responsibilities and assignments leave me in a place where I don't get to have the contact that I've had in the past over my last seven and a half years on council. So again, I'm disappointed. But that's well-known, so, thank you.
All right. Okay, we could always discuss those. And, you know, the next time it's time to review those, would appreciate those comments at that time. And certainly with these assignments, we see a lot of contribution from council, each of the council members in different capacities. And we appreciate all that you're doing. So let's move forward, then. We will go to item number eight. This is the review and action of our financial audit report. And I'd like to invite those that are representing this item, please come forward.
You wouldn't rather listen to this than profit. Get your price.
All right, welcome.
Before we start, is Lynn back? From his mission?
Yeah.
On his track of the years.
He got back and decided he didn't want to do it anymore. So he went a different direction. He's back.
Went to high school.
All right. Okay, thank you. Go ahead and start, Kristin.
Well, we have Ron from Gilbert and Stewart. And they're our new auditors this year. And we also were working with KNC, who we've had in the past, and they were our financial consultants during this process. And so I will turn the time over to Ron.
Great. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and kind of talk about what we do as auditors.
Hey, Kristin, can you grab that microphone?
Yep.
You have to get pretty close there, Ron, sorry.
Thought I was going to get away with it. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to be here and talk about your city and the audit that we performed. What I'd like to do is just kind of talk about what our job is and what procedures we go through to get to the conclusions that we did and then what those conclusions are. For an audit of your city, there's really three things we look at. We want to make sure the financial statements that you have are materially correct and you can rely on those numbers, meaning that what happened within the city is reflected properly in accordance with accounting standards. We want to make sure that your internal controls, that they're designed, that they're implemented, and they're working effectively. And then we want to make sure that you're in compliance with state law in the areas that the state auditors asked us to review on a periodic basis. So that's kind of our job as we come in and audit a city. How we do that is we take the trial balance of the city or the numbers, and we perform, excuse me, perform a number of tests on those balances to make sure that they're materially correct. So as far as cash, accounts receivable, debt, retirement systems, we send out confirmations. We'll send out a confirmation to the bank, to the lending institution, to the retirement system to say, hey, this is what we show, what do you show? And make sure that those match up. It's a great way to be able to verify that what we're reporting is correct. We pull a number of invoices. At the beginning of the audit, we'll pull a random sample of invoices. We'll make sure that the invoice ties to the check, that it matches the general ledger that is posted properly, that it's, and then as we're doing that, we're also looking at the controls. Is there proper approvals? Is it doing what the controls are set up to do? And we do that for, like I said, randomly, we do that for capital assets. And then we'll pull a sample of invoices that have happened after the end of the year and make sure that the expenses happened in the proper period. And so we pull a lot of invoices. And then as we're going through other tests, we're like, hey, we want to look and see the backup behind this. So can you send us this invoice or that invoice? And that's a great test that we use. We do a lot of analytical reviews. So at the beginning of the audit, we'll look, we'll compare this year to last year, the year before. And we'll see are there trends? Are there big swings and differences that we haven't seen before? That kind of helps us design the tests and the questions to ask to make sure that we can understand where those changes and differences are. We do that at the beginning. Then as we're testing individual balances, we'll do it again. So if we're looking at cash, we'll look and say, okay, this is cash last year, this is this year. Do we see any trends or anything that we need to address? And then we do it again at the end of the audit when the financial statements are written. We'll look and say, okay, on a financial statement level, can we reconcile? Can we see all the differences and changes? And have we addressed everything? So those are kind of the procedures that we perform on the trial balance to make sure that it's materially correct and you can rely upon it. So through our testing, through our procedures, we've come to the conclusion that you've received an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion or the best opinion that you can receive. So what that means is we feel like the information is valuable and it's materially correct based on accounting standards. The second thing with the internal controls, we don't give an opinion on controls. We evaluate those controls. Are they working properly? We do that through interviews, walkthroughs, questionnaires. And as we're doing our other testing throughout the audit, to make sure that those controls have been designed and implemented. If there was a big section of the city that just didn't have a control or those controls were just not at all designed or effective, that would be considered a material weakness. And that would definitely be brought to your attention, probably here, to let you know. If there's a significant number of controls that maybe have been designed and they were effective at one time, but they're not effective now or are not being used, that can be considered a significant deficiency. And that as well would be brought to your attention. So as we've evaluated those controls, as we've done our testing and our procedures, we didn't feel that there was anything that rose to the level of a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So in essence, we're saying we feel like your controls are adequate, that they're designed, they're implemented, and they're working. And so there's nothing that we need to bring to your attention about those. The third thing is the state compliance. So state auditors gives us certain procedures that we're supposed to perform. And we perform some every year, every other year, three years and five years. And so we'll rotate to make sure we get all those in that period of time. If whatever procedure we pick, the state auditor says, okay, you've picked cash, here's the procedures that you need to perform to ensure that you're in compliance with state law. So this year, for Linden City, we reviewed, if I can find the right page. We reviewed budgetary compliance, fund balance, fraud risk assessment, justice court, restricted taxes, government fees, UTI retirement systems, and cash management. So those are the areas that we chose to review for your city for this year. Like I say, some of those are mandated that they're every year. So they'll be looked at every year. Some are kind of on a rotating basis. Through our testing and procedures, and we did know that there was a couple of compliance issues, one being that our budget. So the state requires that you don't overspend the budget that you've assessed. And we overspent our budget. So we recommend that throughout the year, you're watching and reviewing that and mending that budget as you go. If big expenses come, just go ahead and mend that budget as you're going if you think you're going to overspend those.[1611.94] And the other one was fund balance. So, the state requires that you can only spend, you can only have in fund balance in the general fund, 35% of revenues that are coming in the, in the future years. And we have more in that fund balance than, than that 35%. So, what that means is, we need to evaluate and move some of that money for projects that we have ongoing, or projects that are in the future, into that capital projects fund, so that we can get that, that fund balance down into that level. So, as far as the fund balance goes, if you're going to have a finding, that would be a great one to have, because it just means you're doing well, and, and we just didn't maybe move enough money, you know, to, for projects that are coming down the road. So, that's a quick review of what we do as auditors, and our conclusions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has about...
Yeah, just real quick, when you talk about the state auditor's office, how often are they changing things and updating procedures, tests that they want you to perform? And do they reach out directly to you to do that? And do they send the city the same information, if they do it?
Yeah, they're, they're reviewing those every year, and they send out what are called audit alerts. And so, those are, and they allow for public opinion, so they'll, they'll send them out to the CPA community, they'll send them out to the, to the local governments. They'll say, this is the audit alert, you have a chance to, to send in your comments. And then, based on that, they'll design the tests and the procedures to put in. And they put stuff in, they pull it out periodically, change the procedures. But yeah, it's reviewed every day, every year.
Thank you. Now, with the 35% fund balance, so at any given moment throughout the fiscal year, that has to be...
It's based on the end of the year, so by the end of next year, you need to be in compliance with that, with that 35%.
All right.
So, that's when they evaluate it, is it year end?
Part of the challenge that we run into is, we'll have large projects that we've put money into that don't get completed by June 30th, and then we're scrambling to transfer those funds into the next fiscal year, or put it somewhere else in the budget. It's not, it's not transferred to the next fiscal year, but we're scrambling to put it somewhere in the budget.
And at the end of the year, and we didn't spend it, but we didn't budget a transfer, we can't transfer it. So, yeah, we'll have large expenses that didn't end up happening by the end of the year, or we have, like, more taxes, because they're, we received the tax revenue two months after the sales. And so, I try and estimate accurately, I don't want to underestimate, I don't want to overestimate, so I'm trying as hard as I can to, to budget the tax revenue. But then, our budget's approved, and there's three more months that come in, and I'm, you know, I was like, oh, yay, money!
You're doing great. Like he said, it's one of the problems you're not sorry to have, to have too much money saved.
So, Ron, to Kristin's point, does the state take that into consideration, that lag, and that they're doing, you're supposed, you're supposed to get out your magic eight ball and your crystal ball and forecast that well?
It's something I hear other city managers discuss, of the last 30 days in that budget year, of shoving tons of money into their road capital C projects, or something like that, to avoid this problem. And so, it's, if, if you're excited about legislation that could help cities, this is something that has caught us a few times in the past, and so I don't know how to fix it up, but...
And I would assume the, the problem is exacerbated by the supply chain that we've experienced the last two to three years, of, of whether the people that we've, we've wanted to contract to, we've had to then slow it down, because they can't get their product, and, and then, and it's, and, and at optimal time, when a lot of projects are either going forward, or having to be then put on, on the skids for a little bit. And so, you are juggling balls and spinning plates in June and July, right?
And, and we try and end the year at like 30%, maybe we're trying to hold too close to that, and so, in the future, budgets will try and scale back, knowing that we probably will end up higher, but...
It's hard, but when you're so conservative, and yet that kind of comes and bites you in the backside, huh? Okay.
And I think, you know, it's been fairly easy to, in the past, it's been easy to kind of trail or trace those sales tax numbers. When 2020 hit, everybody thought, well, the, the bottom's going to fall out, and so everyone was really conservative in their budgeting approach, and we actually way exceeded what. And I think everybody was like, well, that can't happen again. And yet it did happen again. And so, I think it's, it's a combination of a lot of things, but that definitely plays into it.
Kristin, could you give a little background on the, the over expenditure of those two items?
Um, I did not think of the capital projects fund. It was, um, the road, I'm sure it was the road fund, that we just, just the timing of expenditures, when our, the building time period is over the summer, which bridges two fiscal years. And so, I try and estimate how much will get done in this fiscal year, and budget the remaining amount in the next fiscal year. And then, if, you know, in this case, things got done faster. And then, with the CARES Act fund, that was just an unexpected expense that came right at the end of the year.
Well, thank you very much for a, a great audit, and for all your hard work. Chase as well, your department, you do serve so well, keeping us financially, doing what we're supposed to do. The proof is in the pudding, right here, with a clean audit. So, thank you for all you do. All right. And if there's nothing else, then we...
If I could just shout out and echo that, Kristin does a great job. We, we throw a lot at them, and we appreciate their hard work, and how fast they give it back. So, kudos to them.
Definitely. Kudos to you.
Especially with turnover in that department over the last few years. Very impressive. Great job. And Chase, what a great addition. So...
Absolutely.
Chase have to say something?
Let's make Chase say something.
Maybe, one of the things that we're kind of doing to help a little bit with the budget, kind of sending out like a tracking thing to departments, like, here's the, here's the things we have budgeted for the year. Every quarter, we're sending them a, kind of a reminder, like, hey, make sure you're spending your money like you're supposed to. So hopefully that helps a little.
Yeah, that's a, that's a nice addition that Chase has been able to provide from our department, having additional personnel who's able to help the department heads track their spending.
Wonderful.
Rather than set it and forget it, I think that's perfect.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that very much. All right, we'll wrap this up.
Can I even make a motion, Mayor, on that? I'll move to accept the fiscal year 2022 annual financial audit report as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great job, you two.
All right, we have, the financial audit report is approved. Thank you. Okay, and then our final item this evening is a presentation by our city attorney, Brian Hawes. He's going to give us some quick, open in public meetings training.
I just did a very poor attempt to imitate Alex Trebek, so we're not going to do that again.
Oh, disappointed.
But, but we do have some videos, I, I just one little clip, talking about the importance of, of public meetings. I want you to know that none of the characters in this video are intended to reflect any member of the staff, or any member of our public. That's so awesome. So...
Only those that watch it.
And, and we'll go through this fairly quickly, because again, we just, we just did this training in November, but in talking with Adam, we think it's probably a good idea to do this training. It's, it's mandated by the legislature, and we're going to try and start a new process of doing it the first meeting of every year, to make sure we get that done. And last year, there were just, we had it planned a couple of times, and it, there were other things that were more pressing, and it got bumped back and back and back. We don't want to, to go down that route. So, again, this is required by Title 20, 52 of the code. And I love this, I, I show this to you every year. I really think it's a true statement, that information is the currency of our democracy. And, and all public information, all public activities or, or decisions need to be taken in open, and our deliberations in open. So, public participation is critical, and here are just some, some examples. It should, it worked earlier. And just go into that. The link isn't there? Are you kidding me? I came in to make sure it worked, and it worked. That's just technology for you. So, all right, we'll skip that. It won't be that, but...
Can't you do your impression?
I was going to say, the one person, if you know Parks and Rec, and, and as I say, the one person that maybe is reflected by one of our staff members, it might be Ron Swanson. But, I won't, I'll let you decide who that is. But, anyway, it's just, it's just, if you have a chat at second, just Google Parks and Rec, public meetings. And there's, there's some, it, it's pretty good. Anyway, apologize for that technical snafu. It does mean we'll get out of here about 10 minutes earlier, though. So, again, we talked about this before, the definition of our public bodies is just two members, authorized by statute, authorized to expend tax revenue, invested with authority to take care of business, authorized to expend or support it. So, our planning commission doesn't expend tax revenue, but they're definitely supported by tax revenue. So, they, they constitute a pub, a public body, and are subjugated to this act. Public bodies do not include the political parties, groups, or caucuses, certain legislative committees, or school councils, community councils. Definition of meetings, whenever we're holding with a quorum present, and we're there for the purpose of discussing or acting on matters over which we have jurisdiction, this, of course, includes our workshops, our site visits, and our executive sessions. Definition does not include that social, our social meetings, a chance meeting, or when there's only two members of our council there on a committee, that's not a public meeting, because again, we're not meeting that quorum. And so, also, if we are meeting in our purely executive function, we're not expending any funding, funds, and we're solely there to discuss implementation of administrative matters, that doesn't constitute a public meeting either, and does not have to be noticed up. Definition of a quorum is really simple here, as long as there's three of us here, we have a quorum. And again, a two-person meeting in a committee does not equal a quorum. Open meetings, all meetings are deemed to be open unless they're closed, and we'll go through that really quickly, as we've done before. Location and public meetings and workshops, this is one I didn't go over in Jeopardy. But, when we're holding workshops and executive meetings, those need to be held in the, in one location during the day. In other words, we can't do a, a work session in one location, down at public works, and then come back to the city council chambers, or the, or city council meeting, because that confuses people about where the meeting might be. Unless there's an emergency, or unless we're doing a site visit, where we just, it's really, really critical that we go and visit a site to see something that we just won't understand. But then, we just got to make sure that we, we give adequate public notice on both of those meetings. But, we don't run into that problem. I can't think of any time that we've run into that problem or done that. So, but I just wanted to point that out to you. Notice of public meetings, again, Adam and Kathy are awesome on this, but they do have to be given at least 24 hours in advance. There are certain ones that require the 10-day notice, and again, that's for those involving land use ordinances and those types of things. But generally, 24 hours, the agenda, the date, the time, and the place. And then, once a year, Kathy makes sure we have to publish all of our planned meetings. Those, those meetings can be adjusted, but at the beginning of the year, and again, Kathy does a great job taking care of that. Agendas, you guys know the rules, if something's not on the agenda, we can discuss it if it's raised by the public, and we don't take any final action. If something's not on the agenda, outside of our council reports, the council reports are on the agenda, we can talk about those types of things. But we can't say, hey, I just got an email from a citizen, and I want, and I, I want to present all this information to you. If the citizen comes and says, I want to present it, that's great. But we can't present something that's not on the agenda. Okay? The open, the minutes, again, you guys do a great job with this, Kathy does a great job. The minutes are the official record of the meeting, they can be amended if we need to amend those through the proper procedures. But, minutes that are awaiting approval, those are open to the public. We have to approve our minutes as quickly as we can, as, as reasonable. Recordings of our open minutes, those have to be published within three days of the meeting. Our minutes, we can take what time is reasonable. So, if, if we go to 2:00 in the morning, one, one session, and there's a ton of minutes, it's going to take us a little bit longer to prepare those, and that's reasonable. And so, that's what it's talking about. Again, no recording is necessary in the public, excuse me, if we go to a, a site visit. I think we try to do that if we can, just to be safe, but it's not required by statute. And just remember, any member of the public can record our meetings, too, as long as they're not interfering. You know, if they want to come in and set up a camera right in the middle, and we can make them, you know, not interrupt the meeting, we can move to the edges and whatnot. But if we see somebody recording, that's perfectly normal, that's perfectly all right, allowed under state law and under the Constitution. Closed meetings, we've gone through this before, you have to start in an open meeting. You can only go for the certain purposes that will be on the next slide, and 2/3, the super majority of the council has to vote to go into the closed meeting, that's a roll call vote. And we can only discuss the purposes that we've talked about, we went through before. Discussion of character, professional competency, physical or mental health of an individual, collective bargaining, pending or reasonably imminent litigation, purchase or exchange or sale of real property, including water rights, deployment of security, personnel devices or systems, and allegations of criminal misconduct. We cannot take any final actions, we cannot discuss anything that's not on, you know, the purpose for which we closed it. We can't say, well, let's talk for this about five minutes, and, oh, well, we're here. And, you know, it's, it's, it's limited that way. We do have to record our closed sessions. We don't have minutes, those are not public records. But we do have to close our, our, excuse me, we do have to record our closed session, unless it is for competency and character, mental or physical conditions. But then the mayor, or whoever's the chair, has to sign an affidavit, saying that that was the purpose for it. So, 99% of the time, we're going to have our, our closed sessions recorded as well. Those we keep, but they're only disclosed if a judge says they need to be disclosed. So, that's what we just did. Electronic meetings, we're doing that more and more now. We have an ordinance that allows us to do it. So, but again, you have to have one anchor location where the public can come, and we have to have the facilities, and, and thanks to COVID, we have those facilities, so that the public can watch and participate, and give comments during that electronic meeting. But, that is becoming pretty standard throughout the state now. Texting and emails, I say this every time, there's nothing express that prohibits us from texting each other during a, a, a meeting, but please don't do that. It just has the wrong impression, and we have to always remember that anything we text to each other, email to each other, that is a public record that can be discovered and obtained through a grandma request. Just what I said there. And then finally, the consequences of failing to comply with this. If we don't follow the Open Meetings Act, we are subject to a lawsuit. Now, we're not subject to penalties for following it, there's no statutory penalty for it. But we do have to come back, we have to redo everything, and whoever brings a lawsuit is for sure going to get their attorney's fees and costs, which can be significant, and that in itself is a significant penalty. Anyone who wants to sue over a violation of the Open Meetings Act has to do it within 90 days of the meeting that was done inappropriately, or within 30 days on a meeting that involves the issuing of bonds. Those bonds being issued are critical, and, and the, the institution's ability to rely on that is critical, and that's why it's a shorter time period. And then finally, if a court were to find that any one of us was acting with the intent to purposely go around the act, that's a class B misdemeanor that's punishable up to 180 days in jail. Not that that, I don't, have never heard of that or seen that, but that is, that is the, the penalty that is allowed for a class B misdemeanor. And, that's it. Sorry, didn't get my video for you. It was really good.
What about top secret documents?
Top secret documents, please do not leave them in your garage, do not take them to your resorts. Please make sure that, that they get right to the, the National Archives.
Just in a public note, it seems strange that people at the top of our government don't seem to know the things that we learn at city council meetings.
Need to export Brian up there to give them a, a review.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Powell. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
And just one more thing, did anyone mention Phil Brown's retirement party? You all have that on your calendar?
Oh, we didn't, we're not, go ahead.
Okay, it's January 31st, 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Kathy, thank you so much for organizing that. Okay. Yes. All right. 2:00 to 3:00 on January 31st, is that correct? Thank you again, everybody.